Start off with a cent to weight the positive. Mrs. Schleif, would you like to go first?
Yeah, we have some great things going on here on the junior pirate ship. Just want to share last week, we had our, we had our sprinkling, which is one of kind of our first parent, or our first family event that we had on campus and it was just, we had over 100 families come and we had great crafts and activities and food and chalk art and just a great celebration and connecting building with our families. We had all of our staff, most of our staff were present and it was just a wonderful night to celebrate togetherness. If you look up here, we have these great flags. These flags are the individual flags that our students brought back from their fifth grade outdoor trip to Pacifica. And today I was talking to Mr. Priscanus and he was talking about how that trip really bonded their class. Kids came back with such enthusiasm and it just really was, you know, a rite of passage for these students. When I was in Miss Kima's class, the day they got back, I asked the students, how many of you had, had never been camping? Seventy-five percent of those students in the class had never camped before. And I said, how many of you would want to camp again? And 100% of them raised their hands. So it was just a really wonderful experience. I want to thank all of the team members for making that happen and just really grateful for the state for supporting that outdoor ed. Want to also invite folks to our family sing night. This will be a first for us. It'll be a family sing night and then a garden party here on June 7th in the evening from six to seven. So if you want to come, enjoy learning songs through from Rogue World Music and our music teachers, feel free to come and enjoy that. Should be a festive night. We're also really excited to bring back our field day. We haven't had field day in three years. And so on June 13th, we will have a full-fledged field day. And then thank you to Sedexo because we will be providing our barbecue that day free to all. So please come join us. And last but not least, I want to give a shout out to Lori and Wendy, our front office crew, because it is registration time. And oftentimes it's hard to get people to register. And so we have, or they have come up with some great creative ways. We have some competitions going. So I want to give a shout out to Ms. Dusak and Ms. Boyle's class, because they've already earned their ice cream party. So we're just trying to find creative ways to encourage people to register. So if you haven't registered, please register.
Board, Chair, Chair Lady Watson, still never have figured out how to say that. So anyway, Kurt Shank, Principal at Orchard Hill. So I mentioned last time that we were doing a penny war to raise funds for World Kitchen, who kind of really helped out our communities during the fire times. And I want to announce that we have finished that and we raised $997.19. So almost $1,000 of pennies. And I didn't have to go change those in. So I don't know how, how long Kelly Reed was at the bank cashing those in, but it was quite a while. So anyway, so Mrs. Christopher's class brought in $163. So she was the top, top producer, top winner. So congratulations to them. And it was a great activity and the kids really got into it. So that was fun. I wanted to thank our wellness team. They've done a couple of things here just in the last couple of weeks. So really positive things where they provided a luncheon for us, for the whole staff, via, I think, most of the grant paid for that. But it was a great luncheon, a great time for us just to kind of hang out as a staff and take a little time, just to take some breaths and spend and enjoy our kind of time together and just kind of being, being, yeah, having a little fellowship, I guess, together. So they also organized a staff bowling outing. So last Saturday from four to six, we gathered, several of us gathered at the Roxanne Bowling Lanes. And there was 20 plus, close to 30 folks there from the staff with their kids. And it was a great event. I did get to do a couple of games and I don't know how, but somehow I got a blood blister on my pinky from throwing a bowling ball. Never experienced that before. Lastly, I wanted to recognize and thank our, again, our IA's teachers and everybody for all their hard work and doing the end of the year assessments. Dibbles, state testing, iReady, all diagnostic, all that stuff. It's, it's a heavy load, but they're doing a phenomenal job of just working together and making that all work. And, and just, yeah, just making it an experience for the kids, a positive experience for the kids. And the preliminary data looks incredible. So I'm really excited to kind of wrap some things up and see if, when we get done, it all looks as good as I think it's going to look or what it looks like right now. So that's it from Orchard Hill. Thank you very much, Board. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair Watson. I'm lovely. I'm bored. It's nice to see everybody. We are super excited to, I like unofficially declared this week Bob Week at Talon Elementary. And if you remember, Bob was our little sparrow that we adopted this year, little guy. And so he gets to come to school tomorrow and actually meet the kids in person. I'm super excited about it. And so it's his mama. So our target goal was 300 hours and we hit 570. So just really, really proud of our kids and our staff for stepping up. So he's going to come on campus. We get to meet him and then all of the kids are going to line the track because he's a real big BMX kid. And so he's going to do some sit trips with his bike and do some laps. And we're going to have signs and just really honor his journey, his medical journey, because he goes into a pretty big surgery next month. So just thanks to our staff and our students for all their efforts to support them. Mike Shawna, we're in the, next week is our fifth grade outdoor ed experience. And, you know, not having that, like the full experience last year or the year before, I think the kids are really excited because it is a rite of passage for sure, for those first, those fifth graders to get out there in camp for many of them for the first time and just experience nature and kind of bond. So I'm so excited for that. I'm also really happy to share that this week, a team of us got to interview 10 really amazing candidates for the new community care positions. They were, it was one of the most, I don't know, like inspiring interview processes I've ever been through because we ask people to come with ideas about how they were, really want to implement change and impact our community. And it was just, we were like inspired. We're like tearing up the whole time like, wow. And we settled on three internal candidates. Laura Latham, who's our, you know, liaison here, or Laura Mallett, oh my gosh, I do that all the time. Lauren Mallett, sorry. Geez. And then Rosario Medina, she's our two-way kinder teacher. She is really connected to the talent community, community. And so she'll be working with me at my school as a team. And then also Katie McCormick from here too. So Shawna's like, Katie is their hug specialist here. And she's also has some really cool experience in this kind of work from the Bay Area. So we're just so jazzed about this opportunity and really grateful to the state really for choosing us to kind of design this project. And then like her, I want to send a shout out to all our testing people. Oh my gosh, it is a testing carnival, Palooza, whatever you want to call it, because it takes a ton of work with Esprac going, with our diagnostics, with Dibbles. And all, a lot of our kiddos really require a lot of one-on-one time to get those done and really get accurate results that really do show the growth. So just thanks to all of our testing team and that's it.
Wait, we're supposed to be doing testing?
Good evening, Madam Chair Watson and members of the board. Kent Valier, Principal at Talent Middle School. I've got a few things I'd like to share with you. Some great exciting news for our athletic department at Talent Middle School. Dave Johnson is our thought director and he applied for and was awarded a $1,000 grant from the California Casualty Insurance Company. Hope there was no casualties involved with that grant, but he did win the money. They'll be on school on Monday, to school on Monday to do a little reward ceremony. I'd like to really publicly thank a staff member. It was hard to find a two-way immersion teacher this year at Talent Middle School. And we harvested some local talent. Alayda Mark was a longtime teacher's aide at Talent Middle School and jumped into teaching. And she's a first-year teacher, but unbelievable job. And she's been doing great. She took some of her students up to Mount Ashland the other day to do some nature environmental study. And then today I was in her class and she had students doing journals about what they saw, types of trees, but they were doing it all in Spanish. So it was just a great way to integrate those two subjects. So Alayda, I wanted to recognize her because she really took on a lot this year, but she is shining for sure. I hope you're not tired of hearing how great the high school is and the new, new stadium. I didn't see Dave Earhart here, but I did want to thank him. I was able to volunteer at last Friday's district, or I should say Skyline Conference Track Meet. And wow, the organization to pull that off, to get the volunteers and to make all that work is tremendous. But he represented all of us very, very well, as did the kids. And it's just a joyful thing to be at. Lastly, I would just want to share that the fifth grade parent night is June 5th at Talent Middle School. We'll welcome the parents. We've got some activities for kids, some presentation and some tour times for parents. So we're excited to welcome the new families to Talent Middle School. Thank you. Mr. Santi, everybody.
Thanks, Kent. Appreciate it. Aaron Santi, Phoenix Town Board of Directors. Good evening. Aaron Santi, Principal at Phoenix Town Rising Academy. At PTRA, we're celebrating 70's Facial Hair Month. Or just me. But just a couple of things. First, wanted to share that I'm sitting on a virtual school statewide Suicide Prevention and Mental Health Roundtable. That's a tough turn to make right there. But anyway, one of the great things about that is we're recognizing statewide with so many students, either in distance learning voluntarily, or because maybe they need to be for various reasons, we're seeing a lot of an uptick in student mental health issues for students online. And so we want to get ahead of that curve in PTRA. And I've had conversations with our staff, in fact, just this morning about it. So we're coming up with ways to try to make sure that we keep our students' mental health at the forefront for those students who are harder to stay in touch with when they're not here in front of you every day. And so wanted to make you guys aware of that, that we are trying to be proactive and working forward on that. And then the final thing for me, just on the data side, is I want to acknowledge our attendance manual review team, which is all of our principals at the elementary level, as well as middle school, and every office manager and our attendance clerks from the middle school, high school. We're rewriting our attendance manual. And I know that doesn't sound super exciting, but what it does do is it allows our staff to be a little bit more effective in how they move forward and also help our parents understand what they need to do to make sure that their kids are here every day. So it's important work. It's not probably the most exciting work, but I do want to thank all those folks for that. And with that, Mr. Walker.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Watson, Board. Toby Walker, Principal, Phoenix High School. Not sure how I follow a pink injury at a bowling alley, 70's hair, but I got a lot of good stuff. Kent did take one of mine, so my list got shorter. I do want to touch on the district track meet. You know, it's been a long process for the stadium and the school to get built. And even that track, remember when we put that track in, COVID hit, we didn't have a track season that year where that track went in. So it was really awesome. Carolina Campbell and I were working the long jump where we looked at each other and go, I think we're taking it for granted already a little bit. Just how awesome it is, how cool it was to see multiple events, just smooth running. And yes, kudos to Dave and John Cornet for putting on an awesome event. Other awesome news, it is senior time. I told you guys a couple of times that you're going to hear some senior awards. Adrienne Gomez and Shannon O'Connell received the Ford Scholarship, which is, yeah, that's a huge celebration. It's like a full ride scholarship for those two for four years of school. Our, our scholarship committee met earlier this week and awarded some other scholarships. And I'll be excited to share that news soon as well. Art show, our new commons, there's a lot of new stuff still. We haven't set up art show. We haven't done a lot of things at the high school. And Jessica Rollins has done a great job showcasing the work that kids all the way from Art One all the way up to AP Art and Art Four, the awesome work they do. But that doesn't get put together without her work, the students' work, and our custodials' work to set that space up. So I want to thank Alan Thapin and Jessica Rollins for putting up the art show. If you guys are at the high school, come check it out. It is awesome. I'm going to stick on the awesome theme. Our first theater performance in the new theater opens tonight at seven o'clock. John Doty has put together, it's just a great start to the program, a great building block. I don't know how to pronounce it. It's Antigen, Antagon, Antigony. Well, I didn't have either one of them right. Antigony it is. And it showcases tonight, Friday night, Saturday at two and Saturday at seven. So if you're around, go check it out and support those kiddos. David For, our construction teacher, built a lot of the set for that. So want to thank him as well. With that, that's it from the pirate ship. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Board, Chair Watson and Phoenix Town Board members. Amy from Sedexo Food Service here. We're just still wrapping up the end of the year, but some exciting news. We got our last commodity order today. So we've pretty much used up all of our commodity entitlement. Our fresh fruit and vegetable program, we actually got awarded an additional $9,400 that will actually carry through September next year. Shawna actually hosts that. But we, we're excited that we've got additional funds to continue that program and then we'll get a whole new award in October. The rest for Food Service, we've just kind of been tagging on everybody's exciting news, you know, doing field day at Phoenix Elementary, doing opening, welcoming the fifth graders at Talent Middle School with some catering, everybody's honor roll cookies. We're, we're really just excited to be part of, you know, all of the celebrations and just enjoy that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on the board or anyone else have any accentuate the positives? Okay, moving on to student report. Ruby, would you like to go first?
Hello, everybody. So prom was last weekend and it was, it was a huge hit. There were way more people than we thought were going to go. Really appreciated the participation. The DJing was great, Mr. Campbell. We loved it. And the chaperones were great. And we really want to thank everybody who helped us out. We got lots of student love from it. A few people came into leadership and told us how much they appreciate it, especially not having one, not having a proper prom for so long. We have an eighth grader sport and club fair next week on Thursday, where each sport and activity from the high school will have a booth where the eighth graders can come around and ask questions and to hear the experience that the high schoolers have had in each of those. That's all I have.
Okay. The PHS marching band will be marching in the Azalea Parade in Brookings on the 27th. We will be spending two nights in Brookings, so we have time to announce our new drum majors of 2022 and 2023. We will also have our traditional senior send-off, so we can say goodbye to our friends who are graduating. Some of the band members, I don't really know much about it. It's just something that's going around. But some of the band members have mentioned having a little celebration for our seniors and they're calling it a miniature band prom, which I thought was really sweet. Our all-district concert is coming up on June 3rd with the middle school band, the high school band, and the jazz band. We will, we are all looking forward to it because we haven't really had much of a concert in a while, since winter, since our winter concert in December, I think. So yeah, it's been a long time since a concert. So we're really excited to finally have this all-district concert with all of us playing. Link Crew is hosting a field day next Thursday for all of our freshmen to celebrate their first year of high school, which is also really exciting. I'm sure they're pretty excited about that as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you guys so much. We appreciate it. Next up is citizens comments. Do we, do we get any in-person? Yeah, I'm going to ask that next. And if there's anyone online, if you want to raise your hand or put your name on the chat, and I will just give you a brief description. Each person has three minutes to speak with a 30-minute time limit. The board is here to hear, here directed, the board is here to hear. The board cannot hear complaints directed towards employees and public. I'm thinking we're not. If you're doing this virtually, we will wait. And I don't think there's anyone in person. Okay, hearing none, public comments are closed. And superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam Chair Watson. I just have a few things. I do want to mention that Jeff Oshman is going to be retiring after this year. He has been our Sedexo Regional General Manager for many, many, many years and a great partner. You know, sometimes when you see that leadership change, you know, in a region with a company such as Sedexo, you get a little nervous, but I am so thankful Amy is here with us. I was a couple of years under about a challenging couple of years at that. And so, but we will be bringing Jeff to a board meeting in June to, to thank him and honor him. So and we'll let you know about that. We continue our district office field trips with our staff at the district office. It's been so fun to get in the buildings. We are going to go to Talent Middle School tomorrow at 9:00 AM. So if you want to join myself and a few district office members there, that would be great. Tiffany Lambert will be taking a team over to the Transition House on May 31st. I'm not sure of the time, but if you have some time on May 31st, you can get with Tiffany. So, and I think Ms. Salmon's taking some people to the high school to walk around tomorrow as well. So at break, you can chat with her about that time. Finally, I just want to share, we do not have school students on May 27th, next Friday. And it's an in-service day for our district, for staff. And that in-service day is focused on take care of yourself and your own well-being. That might mean you being at school, but it also may mean that you're taking a hike or, you know, going to the lake or whatever you want to do. So it's well-received by staff and I know the board, we talked about that earlier in the year, to have that day for, for just unwind a little bit. And it's, thank you for that, for the staff. Our buildings will be closed that day. And hopefully no cars in the parking lot at our schools. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for, for?
Yeah, the whole, the whole district will be, yeah, closed.
Thank you. Moving on to the program report. Tiffany, I believe you're starting this off.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Board. I'm really excited to be able to present our migrant education program. Our migrant education coordinator, Maria Lee, I wish we could celebrate with her tonight, but her kids had a music performance. So she is there. But I'd also like to thank Bianne Jimenez for being here from the ESD. She very much supports our migrant education program. Our presentation will be in Spanish this evening. So if you would like or need the presentation in English, you get to go back to your Walkman days of the 80s and 90s. We do have devices in front of you. They're already powered on and should be on channel one. The volume is the two right buttons, closer. And the headphones are just little speakers. You can either hold them up or you can be like Michael, you can hook them on your ear. It looks really cool and you have it. If you were online and a guest there, would you please switch to the interpretation channel and you will hear the lovely voice of Kim? If her voice sounds familiar, it's because she interpreted for our graduation last year. She does a great job. I don't know, like I've never tried simultaneous interpretation, but like Nancy, I know you have, it is a very difficult, important skill. It's just magic. So I would really like to thank you very much. And I hope you do graduation again this year. Wink, wink there. So. Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. Kim already asked me that before and I apologize already. Thank you for that. So our migrant education program is hugely successful, in part because we have great success from, or support from Maria and Bianne, but really because we have an amazing parent group, our parent advisory committee. They're strong, empowered parents and families that really guide and run the program. And we couldn't do it without their support. And we have great success with our students because of it. And so it is a pleasure to introduce some of our leaders of the program, our president, Fabiola Reyes, and our vice president, Maria Alcala.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Fabiola Reyes. Como ella lo dijo, soy padre de este programa desde hace 24 años. Pertenezco al programa migrante. Estoy orgullosa de pertenecer.
Okay. My screen.
Está mejor el tono? Con micro, no? Desde entonces, porque me involucré a la escuela. Tengo tres hijos, mayor 24 años, en el pasado, que graduó de suscripciones. Mi segundo hijo estudiando en FUT y la más pequeña, que se va a ir a mi escuela. En el programa migrante me involucré, para poder presentar a mis padres, de conocer el programa de la escuela, cómo todo funciona, y a la vez tener un poco de voz en el trabajo. A la vez también soy un poco la voz del padre, que no puede estar, pero que está por todo. Mi compañera, la de la. Mi compañera, la de la.
Thank you very much. Did you have something to say?
I don't know. I think we're gonna break for, I don't know, prepare for questions, but we can probably translate questions if we need to. Yeah. Are they prepared for questions? Michael has a question. I don't, okay.
First of all, thank you for providing such a detailed presentation with such good information. That's important for us to see. I'm curious, what are some of the unique challenges that a migrant student might have when it comes to attendance? Because I imagine there's some barriers that a migrant student might experience that my kids, for example, wouldn't, particularly in those younger grades.
I think some of the challenges, we don't really have to bring our skills to school. Sometimes we do have service of the house. So, but no, we go for what we want by ourselves. So it's one of the challenges because neighbors live or so busy. Latinos parents work a lot, so we have to provide our skills with education and support. So one of the challenges is to run, to start to use tools, work to my work. And then get out of my work, come up with a master, really hard to know how. But military, military, I love to be in other programs, helping. So that's why I have to test, that's me. That's, you know, for Latinos or, uh, for, uh, help. I live across the freeway.
Thank you so much for sharing. And I think it's really great that we got to hear your presentation in Spanish and experience what it's like for so many of our families to come to events and have the translation. I, I'm at a little bit of an advantage because I can understand a lot of Spanish. Can't speak it very well, but I can understand a lot. But I think it's, it's really eye-opening for the board to be able to experience that. And so I just think that was one of the best presentations I've heard this year in any language. So thank you so much.
Any other questions?
I have one. I'm wondering, I see, maybe I missed something, but you talked about at the elementary schools, how you have different programs in the summer and after school. What's happening at the high school during that time? Do you have programs at the high school? A credit retrieve, credit retrieval, yeah. The attendance wasn't at the place, right? Okay. And in the high school setting, did you find, because you've had kids that were, I think when my daughter actually graduated in 14, that's, I think it's about the same time. What was missing, like at the, in the high school for them? If they weren't really assimilated, were they assimilated into classroom, all the classrooms? Or were they in the ELL program? I just want to thank you for being activist. I guess I'm going to say that. I don't know how to say that in Spanish. But being so active in this community and standing up for the things that we need to be aware of. And I have a close, close friend who graduated as valedictorian at Phoenix High and she's now at Western, Western Oregon. And she's finishing her degree there. And at that time, I think there was four Latino ex-females at Phoenix High graduating who were amazing. And I know that this program has come a long way over the last few years and probably because of your backing of these students. And I appreciate what you're doing.
Estoy súper orgullosa de ustedes y me encanta que pueden representar la comunidad latina en una forma tan hermosa. O sea, son fuertes, inteligentes, trabajadoras, luchadoras. Han perdido algo del miedo para poder estar aquí y representar a esta comunidad.
Para apoyar a este programa, para que reciba quizás más fondos, que estos programas en realidad sean más inclusivos en el sistema escolar, no nomás como "oh, las familias de PAC", pero que en realidad sea un programa que esté integrado en el sistema escolar. ¿Y cómo las podemos ayudar? ¿O qué podemos hacer para animar más papás? Porque yo sé que ustedes están, pues, trabajan, tienen hijos, están súper involucradas en muchas cosas. Entonces, ¿qué podemos hacer nosotros para apoyar, para que más gente se sienta como más bienvenida en estos programas?
I will. Yes. I will. You mean you didn't understand? Wow! This is a perfect example of how we unintentionally exclude families when we don't have those... I know, my love. I'm happy to. And I will. I will reframe my question, and then I will summarize what she's saying. So my initial question was, or actually, it was a comment, that I'm really grateful for all of the work and dedication. I have had the wonderful honor to work with Fabiola for a few years now. Getting parents involved in a number of different programs that I have just been personally involved with. And I was just sharing my appreciation for their continued effort because, you know, I understand that it's hard. They're incredibly hardworking parents. They have kids, they're involved, they have jobs, they have sports. So trying to balance everything and still giving time and energy for this really valuable resource, right? So because I understand that they are giving a lot, what is it that we are able to do to better support this program so it has that sustainability? And not just that sustainability, but how can we support them to make this program more welcoming? Like, what is it that we are able to do this and better integrate? Thank you, Kim. You did, you were listening to better integrate this PAC program and not have it, like, siloed and it's like something that we learn from every so often, but it's something that is deeply, deeply connected. And her response thus far. Yes, yes, thank you. And then the response is, there's an acknowledgement that, you know, parents do want to learn English, but there's also different challenges with that. But the language barrier is really difficult to be able to get involved, to be able to feel welcomed, to be able to show up in spaces and have a voice when there's that language barrier because people don't necessarily know what is that pathway to come in and advocate for things. Or people might not understand how people are welcomed or able to show up in however they may need to show up. ¿Qué más, mi amor? ¿Su parte del idioma? Y lo puedes contestar en inglés, pero si te sientes más cómodo en español, yo te apoyo.
I think some of the challenges, we don't really have the to bring our kids to school. Sometimes we do have service of that. But no really go for just to watch by yourself. So it's one of the challenges because neighbors live or study that Latino parents work a lot to provide our kids with education and support. So one of the challenges is that we don't really have the to bring our kids to school. Sometimes we do have service of that. But no really go for just to watch by yourself. So it's one of the challenges because we don't really have the to bring our kids to school. Sometimes we do have service of that. But no really go for just to watch by yourself. So it's one of the challenges because we don't really have the to bring our kids to school. Sometimes we do have service of that. But no really go for just to watch by yourself. So it's one of the challenges because we don't really have the to bring our kids to school. Sometimes we do have service of that. But no really go for just to watch by yourself. So it's one of the challenges because we don't really have the to bring our kids to school. Sometimes we do have service of that. But no really go for just to watch by yourself. So it's one of the challenges because we don't really have the to bring our kids to school. Sometimes we do have service of that. Didn't have that possibility to get help. And sometimes it's very, very hard to get food and stuff. I try a couple of times because I was very hard for me, financial very hard. And I try and I say, oh no, you, it's a little bit, two hundred more. They said, but oh, my rent, my bills and my kiddos and us. And we didn't work because I get three times Kobe. And with Kobe, I get paralyzed my face. I get a minor stroke. So I wasn't the hospital. I am still paying bills and the hospital for Kobe, for my minor stroke. And it's for me yet. It's a lot families suffering that. So yeah, if any help, any support, making like a team, like PTA team, making any other support to families, helping them, especially these families who get more affected. I will be very grateful with all this community.
Any other questions or we?
Good, thank you, my friend. Thank you so much for sharing all that wisdom. And I really appreciate that courage to speak up and advocate because that can be really, really hard. And I'm just really grateful for all of the things that you shared. And I'm really committed and I know that this team is really committed to supporting. But I'm committed to building stronger relationships.
Very well said, thank you Nancy. And I think we're going to take a recess. We have cake to celebrate the accomplishments that you guys have worked so hard and to chat with you for a minute. So we're going to take a quick break and we'll be back online. We'll be back shortly.
Section of research, I don't know why, and I probably spent two hours just on elementary curriculum. And I watched a video, I was very impressed with them, I had Tiffany answered a lot of my questions. I Googled articles and I watched a forty minute presentation by them and I was really impressed. They felt, I felt like they go above and beyond to support students and staff doing blog posts and, and trainings and stuff. So I, I kudos to you guys for picking a company that has the same values as us and really wanting to continue education and making sure that the students get the best and, and they're enjoying the curriculum and it's good for them. So I, I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, I'd like to say I appreciate your questions. Well researched. We should have had you on the committee. You did a really great job.
Thank you. I, yeah. Do I hear a motion?
I move the board approve adoption of the language arts curriculum for grades K through eight, which includes Lawrence Hall of Science, Amplify CK LA, the University of California Berkeley 2021. And Lawrence Hall of Science, Amplify Caminos, the University of California Berkeley 2021 as presented.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Polly. Any discussion before I take it to a vote? Seeing none, we will take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Curriculum passes. Next is textbook adoption for language art curriculum grades K through twelve.
I believe that one's the K eight.
I'm sorry.
Amplify. And I really want to thank the teams, again, the curriculum adoption teams, our elementary, we had representation from every school, we had special education, we had English language development, we had administrators, thank you for that. That really took a lot of time to look at the different materials, but like I said last time, we had some pretty strong non-negotiables, which included that all of the, of the materials were available in Spanish, that we had a diverse representation of the characters, the pictures, the authors that represented our diverse community. And that we really wanted a strong base in the foundations and the science of reading, so phonics based, but you know, starting with phonemic awareness. And so we're, we're feeling pretty good that Amplify met all those objectives. Like Michael said, it is very rigorous. We will need some support to jump to this new curriculum, but fortunately we have fantastic instructional coaches that are going to help with that transition. The Camino's version is the Spanish version of the CK, CK LA, which stands for Core Knowledge Language Arts.
Thank you. I went a little above and beyond on this section of research, I don't know why. And I probably spent two hours just on elementary curriculum and I watched a video, I was very impressed with them, I had Tiffany answered a lot of my questions. I Googled articles and I watched a forty minute presentation by them and I was really impressed. They felt, I felt like they go above and beyond to support students and staff doing blog posts and, and trainings and stuff. So I, I kudos to you guys for picking a company that has the same values as us and really wanting to continue education and making sure that the students get the best and, and they're enjoying the curriculum and it's good for them. So I, I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, I'd like to say I appreciate your questions. Well researched. We should have had you on the committee. You did a really great job.
Thank you. I, yeah. Do I hear a motion?
I move the board approve adoption of the language arts curriculum for grades K through eight, which includes Lawrence Hall of Science, Amplify CK LA, the University of California Berkeley 2021. And Lawrence Hall of Science, Amplify Caminos, the University of California Berkeley 2021 as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Polly. Any discussion before I take it to a vote? Seeing none, we will take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Curriculum passes. Next is textbook adoption for language art curriculum grades K through twelve.
I, I believe that one's the K eight.
I'm sorry.
Amplify. And I really want to thank the teams, again, the curriculum adoption teams, our elementary, we had representation from every school, we had special education, we had English language development, we had administrators, thank you for that. That really took a lot of time to look at the different materials, but like I said last time, we had some pretty strong non-negotiables, which included that all of the, of the materials were available in Spanish, that we had a diverse representation of the characters, the pictures, the authors that represented our diverse community. And that we really wanted a strong base in the foundations and the science of reading, so phonics base, but you know, starting with phonemic awareness. And so we're, we're feeling pretty good that Amplify met all those objectives. Like Michael said, it is very rigorous. We will need some support to jump to this new curriculum, but fortunately we have fantastic instructional coaches that are going to help with that transition. The Camino's version is the Spanish version of the CK, CK LA, which stands for Core Knowledge Language Arts.
Thank you. I went a little above and beyond on this section of research, I don't know why. And I probably spent two hours just on elementary curriculum and I watched a video, I was very impressed with them, I had Tiffany answered a lot of my questions. I Googled articles and I watched a forty minute presentation by them and I was really impressed. They felt, I felt like they go above and beyond to support students and staff doing blog posts and, and trainings and stuff. So I, I kudos to you guys for picking a company that has the same values as us and really wanting to continue education and making sure that the students get the best and, and they're enjoying the curriculum and it's good for them. So I, I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, I'd like to say I appreciate your questions. Well researched. We should have had you on the committee. You did a really great job.
Thank you. I, yeah. Do I hear a motion?
I move the board approve adoption of the language arts curriculum for grades K through eight, which includes Lawrence Hall of Science, Amplify CK LA, the University of California Berkeley 2021. And Lawrence Hall of Science, Amplify Caminos, the University of California Berkeley 2021 as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Polly. Any discussion on this curriculum? Seeing none, I will take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, yay. Thank you guys all for the hard work and I know this was. Next is the board meeting calendar and I believe a new one came in our blue folders.
Yeah, just one update. In August, we learned on Monday at a COSA presentation that it would be very important for our team to be at the summer conference. The first week of August and so that was, we originally had a board meeting scheduled on August fourth. And so what I'm recommending here, the only change based on our discussion from last time is to move that meeting to August eleventh and have one meeting in August.
My motion guy today. I move the board approve adoption of the board meeting calendar for twenty twenty two, twenty three as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Polly. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I will take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The meeting calendar has passed. Next is the district transfer slots.
Thank you. This has been updated based on our discussion at our last meeting. I do just want to make sure that people are aware on the transfer out, the proposed slots are zero, but we do look at all hardship requests out and make sure we're doing what's best for kids in, in a lot of different areas. There are certain criteria for hardships, but we do have, we might need to request some additional information to make sure it qualifies, but we do grant many hardships on out slots, so.
I move the board approve the proposed inter-district transfer slots for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Polly. Any discussion?
I was just gonna say thank you for considering the board's recommendations and thank you for this, to this board for being creative and welcoming new kiddos into our district. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And I vote yes. District transfer slots pass. Next, resolution twenty one, twelve. Commitment of grant funds.
Thanks, Madam Chair Watson. This is exciting in a lot of ways. Yes, me and, shared this at the budget committee that we are receiving funds from a bill, House Bill five zero zero six that are committed to lost property tax revenue and just other funding that is dedicated for municipalities and school districts that were impacted by the fires. And this was originally intended to be distributed over three years. And we just found out recently that they were doing it in one lump sum and so that's why you see that four million dollar number and this resolution is meant to make sure we place those in revenue funds that are appropriate for the use of all these funds and to sustain that over many years.
You don't need to read the entire resolution, just.
You want to be five for five?
I guess I'll be five for five. I move the board, or six for six, yeah. I move the board adopt resolution twenty one dash twelve, authorizing and approving to set aside and designate as committed in the special revenue fund, the HB five zero zero six, lost tax revenue grant received during fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Nancy? Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Resolution passes. Next up, resolution twenty one thirteen, special revenue fund transfer.
Yeah, thank you. This is exciting because last year's budget, the budget committee recommended a million dollars go into a PERS, be deposited into a PERS liability account and we have taken advantage of many incentives from the state. We are hoping there were going to be funds to incentivize this million dollars, as you heard from Senator Golden at our meeting when we recognized him. It's such a popular program that there is forty two districts that are on the way, or, or PERS entities that are on the waiting list for this. And we've already put a significant chunk in, so we won't have that opportunity this year. So we're proposing by this resolution to put this in a special revenue fund to hold to see if we can incentivize that, but make sure it's dedicated to PERS liability in the future. Our predecessors were very smart in, in paying down PERS liability, which has put our district in great shape as far as our PERS rates. And this is something that will really help in the future.
She gave me the nod, so I'll do the next one. I move the board adopt resolution 21-13, authorizing and approving the transfer of monies from the general fund to the special revenue fund for fiscal year 2021, 2022 as presented.
I'll second that. Thank you very much, Michael. And Polly, do I have any discussion?
I would just like to make a comment that I, I think what these two resolutions demonstrate is this board's commitment to protecting public resources and thinking long-term to preserve resources for our kiddos in school. So I think, thank the board and Brent and staff for the foresight and for protecting the resources of the district for years to come. So thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we will take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Nancy? Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Resolution passes. Do we want to take a quick three-minute break real quick? And we'll let the admin scatter out. And thank you so much for working hard. And we'll take a small little break. Take a few needed breaks. Next up is information and discussion and facilities and bond update, but John is not here, so.
There were no significant, there wasn't any significant information to pass on, but I will share that the seismic state committee is getting together next Thursday. So if we are awarded, we should hope within, we should hear within the next few weeks, so.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the financial update, we just, the budget committee, so I would imagine there's not a lot.
There isn't, but you will see a revenue forecast come out. It came out today, actually, so it probably will be picked up by a lot of news outlets. The, the good news is it's significantly up from anticipated revenue again. The challenge is, is it, it enacts a kicker again. And so that doesn't mean that all, you know, general revenue is going to be going up for, for Oregon. But OSBA will probably be sending out some information to you. We just got an update from our COSA advocate, legislative advocate, Morgan Allen, that I can pass on to you too, just so you're aware of the good news and maybe some challenges moving forward.
Did you see the Oregon Office of Economic Analysis, their report they just released like two days ago or one day ago? I'll send that out.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions on this? Okay. Sorry, I thought my phone wasn't. Next up is the legislation OSBA update. Sarah, did you want to go first or do you want me to go first?
I always like it when you go first.
I will go first and you can fill in any gaps for me because I sometimes forget things. Soon, LPC, Sarah and I had a nice conversation with Richard Donovan and Lori at OSBA. And LPC is trying to change things so that all districts feel a little bit more heard. They will be sending out emails, probably coming through Sarah and I, asking for input. The first question that will be is what does your district look like post-COVID? And so you can, it's open-ended question. You can talk about the good, the bad, the ugly, what's needed, what's working. It's important to do both. Laura and Lori and Richard said, so the things that just passed, so for our district, the ADM forgiveness, that's working well for us. And so we need to let them know and thank them. But then things that are challenging still, and obviously tonight, we've heard a lot of challenging things. And it will give us an opportunity to, for our voices to be heard, for our unique challenges down here, and especially for our district. So I'm looking forward to hearing that. And Sarah and I are going to be helping facilitate that. If some people don't feel comfortable sending their remarks to OSBA, we will be able to help them with that and hopefully get a good amount of input that represents our region quite nicely. Did you want to add before I move on? Then I think we talked Pam Marsh is coming May 22nd at the high school. So it was important to come and share our thanks for her support and then also some help, some challenges that she may not know. Next up is the rural caucus was, we had a first pre-meeting with five members. And we're in the middle of forming the committee. We are trying to be thoughtful and get somebody from every rural area. There was a discussion on what a rural school would be, especially like getting members from a rural school. Like I didn't want to approach a school and then not be rural because that wouldn't be. So we are, we're talking about that, but we're thinking along as if like the color caucus, what if you identify with this, with issues of a rural school. And Scott Rogers, the president, had a great, he said he knew somebody that, they were doing, the ESD was combining. And so they had went to some meeting for, it was like citywide. And they came back and said, oh, I'm definitely, we're definitely, we thought we were a bigger school and more urban, but we are definitely not because our challenges are not the same. And so I think that's kind of, I think in the past, some board members have went to the small schools at OSBA and then came out of those and go, okay, we're not a small school, we're not a big school. And so I think it's kind of what, it's going to be up to what you, what you feel is where you're at and that might change. And what challenges you're having, if your challenges are the same as other districts, then this is probably the right fit for you. So I've reached out to a few people to have another spot on this committee. So if you have any suggestions of anybody in another district that would want to be on this committee, let, let me know. And we'll be forming that. I am going to be the chair for a subcommittee, which will be doing mission and goals, easy peasy, right? So, so I will be meeting quite often, but I think it's work. I think it's really great of OSBA to give us this opportunity for schools that have unique challenges to have a voice. And I think it's really important work. So I do not mind giving my time to something that I think is going to help our district and our families. Sarah, do you want to add anything?
I was just gonna say, I thought you had some really good suggestions about some challenges that our district has faced as far as feeling like a rural school with access to services for mental health or special ed. And, and maybe having the list of some of these challenges maybe be on a questionnaire or on something where schools that maybe are obviously rural, I, you know, I would think of Pinehurst as a rural school. And maybe looking at what some of those similar challenges are. And then approaching all, all the districts or ones that maybe you're not sure and seeing if some of what you know to be a challenge in a rural school lines up with some of the challenges that they're experiencing as a way to cross that, that conversation. But I think it's great. And I heard a lot in the last little bit about this, the rural urban tide. And so I think that it's great that the conversation's coming down to how can we best serve the students in our district? And with, you know, what we have to have to work with. So thank you for being part of that.
You're welcome. So any questions on that before I move on?
I, I had something. When I first started doing this, we went to something for OSBA when I first was elected. Let me clarify what I'm saying. We had to attend something and you had to pick small, medium, large. I think it was the three categories. You had to pick what you were and no one could tell us where we were. It was like a big mystery. Like I don't understand why OSBA doesn't like runs, Michael thinks that's funny. I just thought that that was so weird. Like, why don't they make classifications, right? Like that seems like a easy thing.
That's weird because I asked them and they gave me a classification list. So it was bait, when they gave it to me, it was based on student size of your district. And so.
But when they publicized this, where you're supposed to go, they didn't ever say what, what, what was the definition of that? I think I texted Michael and said, what the heck are we supposed to be in here? Like, I didn't know if I wanted to go in the right, and if, when I went there, I wouldn't know if I was in the right place or not because I didn't have enough knowledge to know if that was the right one. So I just think of that. So there is something out there.
There is, and you're correct. They should have put that in the, in the synopsis of the group so that instead of assuming that you automatically knew and assuming that you had read their definition.
Some policy in a book somewhere.
Yeah.
So maybe can they use that to determine who a rural school is?
Well, not really. Well, not really, because what is that school? I can't remember their name. They're right outside Portland. No. Shoot, I, I can.
It doesn't matter. Just say that school.
Anyways, it's school and they're right outside of Portland. They're a small little district and they have 6,000 students. But they're right, like they're like a cutoff between Portland Public and another. So they wouldn't be considered rule because there's no rural land around them. They don't have internet issues. They don't have, I mean, they're, they are like, you know, throw a stone to Portland Public. And so they, there's a couple of those in those pockets where they wouldn't be considered rule. And if you follow the ODE definition of rule, the ODE definition rule is based on how far your, another school district is away from you. Not necessarily some issues like internet and, and you know, those, those kinds of things. So that's, that's, I think, going to be one of the, one of the jobs of this is to kind of come up with a definition that works. Cause I think right now there isn't really a clear definition and the definitions that ODE have are maybe not as useful as, I hate to say outdated, but maybe kind of outdated because things have changed so much. Thank you for that. You're welcome. Any other questions?
I would just say that I don't know that OSAA and CLAC, you know, size, as we've seen, is necessarily a good demonstrator of how to meet the needs of the students in your district. So I appreciate the nuancing that's happening and determining what's rural and what's not.
It's going to be a tough convers- it's going to be a lot of robust conversations. I think all the players right now are really involved and it's something they have a passion for. They're, have great leadership. We have some people that helped with the, the color caucus and that knowledge of forming a caucus will be very helpful. And I think that we have a great plan and I think there's, it's going to be a lot of work, but I think it's going to be very beneficial for OSBA and for us.
And something that I learned at the LPC conference was this process will take a year to determine whether or not there's a need or not a need, but whether this, through this process, it will take a year to determine if a rural caucus is really something that fits the parameters of what a caucus is for OSBA. So this is a, you're going to be hearing about this for a while. This isn't a short, short, no.
Short timeframe. No, and there's, and they, OSBA structured, we have some structure that we have to follow and it will be voted on before it can become a caucus by every school district. So it's, it's a long path to go. Definitely not overnight for sure. So, um, next up is, I'll meet a fire update.
I don't have anything because that meeting is going to be coming, I think next week or the week after. So I don't have anything new.
The only thing I have is definitely heard it tonight that there is pain heard. And the suggestion of really having a committee to, to not only, you know, just transportation, that's where we kind of were focused on. We need to get our kids here, but there's so many layers to the, to the suffering right now for our fire impacted families. So I think that will be something that we can get focused on. Our community care specialists and, and director will be able to help with that and see, really wrap our arms around and say, where are the needs? I, I think we could continue to partner with Get Rogue Food Unites and say, hey, there's still tremendous need for our fire impacted families. And I think we can get some people to rally to, to have some dedicated support. So that's, that's, I didn't have an update until we heard tonight.
I have something else that just came to me that Pam Marsh is having that ice cream social thing on Sunday. And I'm assuming, I think I saw that there is Spanish, there is translation there going to happen. So maybe could you reach out to the folks that were here tonight and, and maybe let them know that that's happened? Because Pam can be a great advocate if she hears this as well, right?
Or can the district send out a message to our, all of our families, especially in both languages? So that they, and I don't know if people understand the importance of going to these town hall meetings. And I don't know if there's a way that puts a little work on Joe, but if there's something short that we can send out that she's going and the importance and how it works, maybe. Um, I know this is like, this is something that you should do, like several parts and it's going to be a several thing. But I think it's a good start and.
He posted it on Facebook, but there's no Spanish part of it and telling them how to access, right?
And I don't think Pam Marsh sent it out in Spanish, but she usually does. And so I think we'll.
I think I saw on her Facebook, there is that, there is a speaking about that.
Okay. So maybe we can have Joe get the Spanish and then have a brief thing about the importance. And I know, I don't know if she's going to have interpreters this time, but every single meeting I've been to hers has had Spanish interpreters and sign language interpreters. So I would imagine that she's following same suit.
And that's great if she is, that's, that's really exciting and we can still help with that information, dissemination of information on our Facebook page that it's in Spanish and also just being more inviting. Sometimes I think that we make assumptions like it's out there, people know how to connect. And I think that we, there's still a lot of opportunities for us to support people to how to connect.
Thank you. Um, moving on to board communications on minutes and the agendas. So as you probably saw in your board packet, that Denise tried something new and so that's topic one. And then we're going to talk about a few other things, but we'll start off with that one.
Okay. That was a little too concise, Ms. Denise. I know. I, I felt like if I hadn't been here, that I feel like there's potentially a balance, maybe from what, all of what you had been doing to how concise this was. And I was struggling a little bit with trying to go back and listen to the board meeting prior to the next one, so that I could, if I, if I missed a meeting, how would I get a full understanding of what was going on? And I know it's my responsibility to be here and follow up, but I, I felt like there the pendulum swung a little too far to the concise side for me.
A second, Rick, let's make sure your mic is on.
I was saying, I was not here for the last meeting and it, on page two of the minutes, the last two items, board members, school site, connections and student representative discussion. The question I came away with, what did Erin and Heather say to the board? And the same thing with the interview of, of the student rep, what was her input on? And I know you got the next item on the agenda, but having not been, been here, these are the questions I had. So I agree with what you said.
And I want to chime in too, because there was one that I missed because I was sick. I, I went to look up the recording and that was like the day after. I didn't see it. And then I, I know I looked about two days after because I was just going to watch it. And it takes quite some time, I think, for us to load those. I don't really know if there was some glitch or something, but maybe be mindful that, that should be posted within a certain amount of time to access, you know, and we would know what that is. I didn't know what that timeline usually is. So it made me wonder like, where is it? Right? Yeah. Yeah. I know it takes some time and bandwidth to load that. Yeah. So, you know, maybe there's a statement that says this will be loaded by this time, right? So you know when to look back because after that, I just like, I didn't watch it because I, whatever. You know, so I did read the minutes, but yeah, I agree.
When I first got here and saw how detailed the minutes were, I thought it was insane. So I actually think it's probably appropriate. They, I think that's how minutes are supposed to be. They're supposed to be that concise. Especially when there are other ways to watch an archive of the meeting. However, I will acknowledge, I think we have an opportunity to make sure that that archive is accessible and perhaps there's a service we could use. You know, if, if we were streaming it at the same time on some platform that captured it, it would capture it automatically. So I don't know if YouTube is an option or Facebook or something like that where you don't have to upload a whole file. It's just, it's streamed and then the archive is, is, is there.
Other districts are doing that YouTube venue and it's really easy for you to access it. You don't have to have all the Zoom, you know. So the public comment part is, right?
Yeah. So I think, I think the minutes, how they were laid out most recently are fine as long as the archive is right there and easy, easy to access, easy, require little to no staff time to manipulate. Somebody wanted to watch it at midnight tonight, it would be there. So that might be something to, to explore, but I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see us go this direction because I thought it was, it's just too much work. And then the other thing is, you know, it's, it's a difficult task to try to, how do you decide what you're going to recount in the minutes? You might miss something, you might misinterpret something. I prefer having it out there. If somebody missed a meeting, they could watch it. And then they can make their own interpretation with all the details. And it also makes it important that we, and we do a pretty good job, but there's still times that it's like, oh, somebody was speaking for five minutes without the microphone. We got to make sure those types of things are really buttoned down to make sure that that recording captures the full essence of, of the meeting. So I thought it was fine, provided, however, I was here so I could understand if I had missed a meeting. That might be challenging. So I think it's just, yeah, how do we access it? Is there a better way to make sure that the archive is just automatically available? And some people want to watch, but don't necessarily, it'd be a lot easier to just click on a service like YouTube or Facebook. If, if you don't want to participate, but you do want to follow along and watch, that could be something interesting. And a lot of, I think Zoom will actually allow us to funnel the feed directly to one of those services too. So.
What about translation though? If we're going to do like, right now with Zoom, we're doing, we're trying tonight, the translation portal, or I don't know what it was called. Excuse me for not knowing. And if that's something we, we want to continue doing, is that, how do we, how do we make access to more families, but also give timely information and to, to all families? And so I don't know, and I'm sure I'm looking at you right now. I don't know if you actually know the answer off the top of your head, but that's just a concern of mine is that I don't want to lose the momentum we're having on translation for ease of uploading when maybe it's worth waiting two or three days. And if the public knew it took, you know, three, three to five days to upload, that might help the situation. I'm just throwing that out there.
We would need to originate a simultaneous interpretation from the meeting and stream that at a separate feed in order for the archive to have that interpretation on it. So.
Yep. I think it's my understanding that when you do have the separate channels in Spanish, it doesn't record, right? Or am I incorrect? I love, there's, there's so many like brilliant folks that are utilizing Zoom, but that was my understanding that it does not record, like it'll record in the English channel, but maybe not in whatever other channel you have. In this case, we're talking about Spanish and then it's interpretation whenever oral information is given and it's translation when something is written.
Thank you, Nancy.
I, I mess it up too.
Yeah, that's where the two differences would come in. Like if you do a YouTube live and when you end it, it's still there.
Yeah, that's true.
So you would just, you would do two different lives. You would do a Spanish live.
And okay.
But someone would have to.
Be simultaneously interpreting. Yeah. Yeah. That makes sense.
And I, I love the idea of YouTube just because our families already have Google accounts, our kids already have Google accounts. So it would be, you know, so, yeah. So I think we're, we're having a discussion about minutes, but I think the reason the minutes, you know, the reason it's important, you know, what the minutes look like is if they are going to be this concise. I agree. We do need to, you know, continue making a couple improvements to how people can access the meeting and all people can access.
I like that emphasis on that all. Michael, thank you.
I want to take a second to say thank you Denise for the billions of hours that you spend doing this. And if we can free up your life to be creative and to do some other amazing things, I am all for that.
Yep.
Thank you.
I second that, even though it's not a motion, but the only thing I second today.
Okay. Do we, any more discussion on minutes before I move to the next? Also, we were talking about Board Book. Are we still going to talk about that? Okay. There was discussion about bringing Board Book and I don't know, I might put Denise on the spot, but it might help ease having Board Book. So Board Book is a program that OSBA uses and some other school districts use, I believe, Echelon and Medford. And the community, it says, click on Board Books and it gives you a whole bunch of links. It's similar to what Denise has kind of done where the agenda has links, but Board Book will give you out links to other items. And it can have calendars of meetings and it's all in one compass meeting information space. It, since it's all in one, it's easier, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, for Denise, because then she wouldn't have things in like five different locations. From what I understand, if someone is not able to use Board Books and still wants a PDF or a printed out file, that it's very simple to convert that from a Board Books to PDF. I've used both lately. I've had a problem with Board Books, so I've been using the PDF that they, that OSBA has sent out and it works fabulous. And it, instead of having the links, it just has the printed paper as in Board Books would have links to the different documents. And kind of depending on what you would want to do.
Is this for external, I'm not sure who the user is you're talking about, internal use for us or for public as well?
It could be both. Yes.
As someone who's served on a board who uses Board Book or who used Board Book, it, it makes it a lot easier.
Yeah.
If you're using digitally, it makes it a lot easier because you have the agenda in one screen. And then you just click, I know we have the links, but you know, there's blue folder stuff isn't always there. So it's just, it's just a lot easier to navigate digitally while you're participating in the meeting, but it is more accessible for the public as well.
I love the transparency of it.
Uh huh. Yes. Very transparent.
Is it caught, do we have to pay for this?
Oh, yes.
What's, what's the bottom line here, honestly?
It's not free.
It's not free. But we may end up saving money with, uh, time and stress. And, and I'll tell you that Denise, uh, doing these minutes, she takes it very, very, very seriously and goes, listens to it. And especially like accentuate the positives when names are being shared in some specific events. And, and, um, you know, it's helped that, you know, she can hear better with these things and the sound and those types of things. But, um, it is literally most of the day Friday after every board meeting. And so, yeah, all day in, in a lot of cases. And, and the regular work doesn't go away, as you know, when you're spending time on one project. So, um, and Board Book is the same way for her to actually, we have a change in a resolutions, but wording amount, whatever it might be.
Right.
To try to get that back and linked into an agenda item.
Right.
Is, takes a lot more time consuming than if it was, um, a Board Book situation.
What is the learning curve for Denise to be able to utilize this? Is it difficult? Oh, I love it.
I don't really know because I didn't check into it, um, in depth. I did ask about the cost. The only thing I see on what she sent me in an email was that the subscription costs twenty-five hundred a year. And then they give free webinars that you can do at your own time to learn the product. They'll have, um, somebody contact you, a consultant to work with you to kind of set it up and organize it that would best fit your, you know, district and what, and how you do it. So I don't know much about it, other than I see a lot of other school districts that use it. And I think that ultimately my goal is to, um, free up time.
Yeah.
So that I can concentrate on other things. So. And the minutes, I do want to just say that all the accentuate the positive, um, is in board notes for staff. And I think you as board members get that as well. So I didn't lose that entirely. It just isn't in the minutes. And so.
I think we need Board Book.
I think OSBA should be offering a discount for Board Book.
Yeah.
Just saying.
I think they do. I think, I think if we were not a school organization, Board Book would be way more expensive. And, um, I believe that they do, they have had Board Book at several, um, of their workshops, their convention, they've had conversation about Board Books and trainings. And, um, I was super, I've been wanting Board Book for our district for maybe seven years now. I went to a workshop and then when I got on LPC, I was so excited. This was back before Denise and it was Siri. Siri, and I was like, oh Siri, we got Board Books. She was like, no, just you did. So, um, so it's, it is a much easier, like Michael said, but it is costly, but I think it will help Denise save some time. And this ca, you know, this was honestly Denise's idea. I was asking her, you know, how can we help you? And she had mentioned, let's look, can we look into Board Books? So, um, I, if you're worried about, you know, giving more on Denise's plate to learn Board Books, I know that that it, it's one of those, yeah, that will be much at the beginning, but better at the middle.
And if you do the quick math, twenty-five dollars is a value. They'll pay for itself in a matter of six board meetings probably, but the time that she spends. So, yeah. Do we make a motion or? But we don't need board approval to, I mean, you can do that, you can do this, Brent, right?
Yeah, we can continue. It, uh, we'll look into it more and look at some trainings and, and maybe, and I know we have some July retreat. Maybe we get, uh, you know, get a some representation and kind of go through it with a, a training. I don't know if they'll have any at the OSBA conference at all, but, but we'll try to get something that for the board.
And they can do, we could, you know, we can pick a, they're pretty flexible and want to help and they could, they could, um, I'm sure they definitely have some stuff. And they might even have an online one. Um, I, I was kind of perusing their online today, their online trainings today. I don't know if they have a Board Book one or not. And looking at that, um, going, hmm, do I, because they also have further, this is kind of a side note. But for their conventions, they usually have like a group, so you can be a bronze or silver. And so I was actually digging in that going, where am I and how many classes do I need to take to move up a level? So, um, yeah.
So, um, contributors are who? Like what I'm thinking is, I'm hearing it tonight here and I'm having a hard time tracking. So there are some really great things that were shared today with June seventh, June fifth, June third times, blah, blah, blah. We still don't have a place for these things that are happening in our school to keep track of them. So I can go there and attend them, like their PAC meeting or, you know, these, these, um, tours that are happening that we talked about at the middle school. And I, like, I didn't get down in my notes, just sitting here listening, when and where those are. Can this house something like that? And who contributes to this? Is it just one person? That's my question.
I think what you're talking about is maybe a central calendar. So if you're at a school building and there's an event happening in your school, you fill out a form and submit it to a central calendar that then gets disseminated to everybody.
And we do have a central calendar and school calendars, but I don't believe they are being updated to the amount that they should be. I know that I've personally looked for my stu, students and I was like, hmm. So, and I know, like meet the principal, I always forget, I write it down and then it, I don't put it in my calendar. So I think that is something that would be very helpful to the board and the community if we were, had a more robust, um, calendar. Uh, I don't know, who did I just put that job onto? But, and I also think it's important, um, for admin maybe to make sure that their school is submitting it, not just assuming that everybody knows, because I think that we really need to be con, like concentrate on that.
It could be a Google form going to Joe and it could be posted somewhere.
Yeah. And I think if you don't, and sometimes they do, if you download our app and you sign up for every school, you can, I believe you can get all the announcements for, um, events coming up.
We have an app. I did not know we had it.
I did not know we had an app.
Okay, we'll get the school board. We'll have Joe, uh, send out something to the school board to download the app and get, get notices. I just got a notice last night on, from one of the schools, so.
And we, and we have a method of sending text messages to families too, right?
Yeah, we have it. All, it's our communication system.
Okay.
And I have the app and I don't get any messages, but it, I could, it could be because it's, um, not updated. Like I haven't got any app messages.
I'll have him do it. When you set that up, I think you have to sign up for, uh, what schools you want, um, notifications for. So when it, when it, when a text message is sent out to families, uh, we usually send it out for texts or email and through the, um, notification system on the app, so.
Does have five stars. I found it. One rating, five stars. So that's good news.
From Joe?
That was Joe.
I just found it at the App Store near me, downloading as we speak.
I, I have it. I apparently need to. Oh, I have seventy-two, I have seventy-two.
You just don't have notifications on.
I just don't have my notifications on, on my phone. So I apologize. It is working. I'm just user error for sure. Anything else that we need to talk about or, um, Brent or Denise that would fall under this?
No, I think we have enough direction to. No.
Okay, we'll move on to follow up on student representative discussion. Last time we had a great, robust discussion, um, with Ruby, the only rep that was here, and then Toby and some admins gave. But I felt, and Brent felt like we needed more discussion to figure out what are, to kind of talk about the next steps so that we can continue, um, strengthening the student rep, um, position. So I will open it up to anyone who wants to add discussion or suggestions on our next steps.
I think one of the things that I heard was we need to decide if we're going to re, um, I don't know what you want. I just tried to call it recruit, but maybe that's what it is. Recruit people for those positions before school is over and when the best time to do that. That's what I hear, the struggle bus was actually when. But it seemed like between Toby and Ruby, they said there was a good time for us to do those elections, maybe before the school year's over for the next year. I think that is a magical idea to get them on board right when we start.
I heard that that, that it's a rough time of year.
I heard there was one window that would work. That's what I heard. See, so now maybe you need to go back and watch that video.
Yeah. What did the minutes say?
I heard the same thing, but we missed that window. So that window was, yeah, so, um.
Probably before April.
Yeah, it was right around.
Because, because April and May, there's, there's a lot of sports. Kids are wrapping up the end of the school year. There are scholarships that need to be turned in. So it's just, it's a really, really busy season. And I think that the focus will also can, I think, continue to be tenth, eleventh and twelfth graders. And are invited to.
I wasn't clear. I meant to say, they did find a window when it would be successful to do so. I'm not talking about this year. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I, I agree. So I would suggest we continue doing it in the, close to the beginning of the year as we can, but keep this on the, I don't know, front burner or somewhere, uh, board calendar, something to discuss to get it moved up to springtime. But for this year, I feel like, um, we need to continue doing, but like get the, get it going.
Yeah, I think it's, it'll be nice for us to spend this time, like from now until, you know, whenever. Just, just a little solidify, uh, pathway and structure. I think October's a good time for kiddos to be recruited. September, it's kind of busy. People are figuring out what's going on with them. Um, October's still pretty early in the year where I feel that it might feel engaging enough. Um, and it isn't like people have missed, you know, big, big timelines or big events, so.
Well, I was envisioning like September when everyone was starting out and they tell you like what's gonna, I mean, in high school, they say, well, in the next sport, you know, football's gonna start or, you know, whatever, and or after what, whatever. And then they can say, and we'll be opening up a spot for student board, you know, keeping on and kind of start promoting it at the beginning when kids are checking in and when parents are like eager and like, oh yay, school's starting. And then can, but yes, continue.
Or those club meetings, right?
Right, the club meetings, right?
Yeah, and it is brilliant to promote it. I guess I was thinking like of that selection process like in October, but yeah. Because I think, I'm not sure of what the process has been in the past. I think it has been like, well, we have some youth and it, we've thought that they've been promoted in advisory or in leadership, but as we heard, like it hasn't been as consistent. And I would like to get a broader reach, not just like the selected students that we know that are like already rock stars. I think that, um, to really meaningfully engage other kids and build up other kids that might not feel that this is an opportunity for them, but there's still this welcoming environment for them to see themselves in.
I agree. And one year we had a really good diverse pool. Um, I can't remember when it was. And I, I, if I knew when it was, how we got that diverse, like if we can replicate that or if that was just a, you know, happy accident or what?
This year, but the year before, we had really great students. I mean, all the students have been great every year, but it was a nice representation of a variety of different, um, interests. And, and it's, again, it's not just the ethnic diversity that we want to ensure. But really like, that there's different interests and different, um, ideas and personalities and styles of individuals. And how do we honor that and, um, and invite them into this space? Because there's so many wonderful things that they can contribute. I'm not sure we're making it as welcoming as we could.
Yeah, I, I agree. And like, and the year before that was really good too.
Great, yeah.
I don't know what year Hannah, we picked Hannah, but, um, she was in a very, very, anyways. If we can figure out how we can continue doing that, um, in conversations with the new principal, maybe she has some great ideas.
I think also including the ones that are currently serving.
Yep.
And having them reach out to different groups in the school is effective as well.
Right.
This is my experience. This is what I gained from this, you know, that type of thing.
Yeah. And luckily there's two of the three, I believe, are juniors, so that will work. Some years we have seniors and that wouldn't work if you, but that's the beauty of moving it to the spring. But, um, yeah, right now this, it will benefit us because we have two, um, student reps that are juniors.
Well, I'm, I'm just a little confused. Sorry about that. It's green, yeah. Well, it, it, in my experience, we've always selected them in September or October. What are we proposing that's different here?
Well, there was talk during our workshop this summer about changing that. And then when we had a discussion that you, um, last meeting that you missed, there was discussion on, you know, how to improve, uh, student, uh, representatives and how to recruit and, and how to support and what kind of questions are good to ask. And we had a really robust, um, conversation. And in that, in that conversation, it was brought up that, um, September is kind of busy. I know some boards pick their, um, student reps in, in, um, the spring. And the benefit is sometimes OSBA Summer Conference will have some board rep training for the students. And then you can spend a little bit more time, um, with them, pre, prepping them in the summer months versus like all of a sudden you're in the middle of school.
Spring, the year.
Right. So you would pick them like in April and then they would have a mentor. They could have a student. You could do it different ways. You could have the student rep then help mentor that, um, the new student rep and kind of do like a mentor pro, um, type program. You could, um, also have, not have them start until the end of the school and give them time to prep and, and, um, give them more information. So it wasn't just like, hey, you are student rep and here you go. Does that make sense?
So we'd be having two groups of student reps we'd be dealing with each year.
You would have.
Existing ones plus those that are coming in.
Possibly, depending on how you set up the structure, and that's a good question. Do, would we want them, just like we are elected in May, but we do not start our term until July? We could do something similar where they're, where they are selected and then they don't start their term until June or July, or we could have a mentor program where they would, would have, I don't know what is best. I'm, that's why we're having that, this, this discussion.
They're like, we're putting a lot of emphasis on the student reps to vote this much time to them.
Yeah, is, I mean.
I'm not saying that's bad. I'm just making.
I think that, in our discussion, and anyone else can jump in, our discussion, we had it. Some of this, some of the feedback we were getting was the student reps were feeling like, oh my gosh, they weren't getting enough, support or structure, thank you Nancy. And they, we needed to make a little bit more robust and a little bit more structure and support for them. And, um, I can see us, because we're a very engaged board, going a little overboard. So thank you for bringing that up. But right now I feel like it's some point, it's just like we have a student rep and I don't know how supported they feel and how engaged they feel. Some do great. And I would like all the student reps to feel engaged.
I think, um, you know, I'm listening to this discussion and thinking about last meeting's discussion. And I'm really just go back to what problem are we trying to solve? Um, and I think the reality is, and we saw it this year, students are busy. And so what I would hesitate to do, sort of to Rick's point, is create more work, um, that is unnecessary. If it's necessary and it solves a problem, great. that is unnecessary. If it's necessary and it solves a problem, great, but not more work for us. I'm not worried about that, but, but more, more work and pressure for the student and yet another obligation for them in the spring or what have you. When I think about this issue, I think the two, some couple of the biggest things that we need to address are just a couple of minor process things. Number one, I love the magic wand question, but I think one thing we saw with that question this past year is it opened the door to a darker side of the question that brought in some, a little bit of negativity. And I would like to keep that a little bit more positive and find a, maybe a question that doesn't open quite that door. And secondly, I, I didn't even think about this until Ruby mentioned it, but I don't know that we should make the selection or at least announce the selection at that same meeting, because I think it's awkward and difficult for the students who weren't selected to now be there amongst their peers. And again, not that, you know, not that we, we can't shield kids from, you know, those types of experiences their whole life. And, you know, we can talk about the participation trophy culture, but I think, but I think, I think, I think this one makes sense to, we don't have to announce it at, at that meeting in front of all their peers and everything. Those are the two things that resonated most for me is just, you know, asking a question that still gets to the heart of what we're trying to accomplish, that maybe doesn't open the door for here's everything bad about, you know, this school year so far. And then, and then I would like to see us, we can deliberate, we can make the selection, but we can just say, thank you, students. Well, we will be making the announcement and let you know, everything. So that was the two biggest things I took away. I think, I think it's fine to select it in the fall, honestly. I just worry about adding more to students' plates in the spring. That's already such a busy time. So that's my concern. And then it, the complication of, is it a junior? Is it a senior? If it's a senior, then there are, you know, then they're already gone.
What if they're selected and then they transfer school?
Right. I mean, all that stuff, right? And I guess that can happen at any point, but still, yeah.
And we did have that. So part of why I actually think spring is still a better time. And I liked Ruby's suggestion of when they're selecting the ASB representatives for the next school year. It gives an opportunity for another leadership role to be part of that conversation. I appreciated her insight into saying maybe advertising on PH TV.
Yeah, that was great.
That was, that was a great suggestion. And well, I, I thought that was a great suggestion. And so I think offering it as a leadership role in the time when you're already offering opportunities for students to look ahead to next year. And because we would be opening it to sophomores, juniors and seniors, it really eliminates the whole senior end of the year push because they're not actually part of that conversation necessarily. Anyway, it's freshmen, sophomores and juniors. And I don't know what time of year, what time of day or year in the year, a high school student isn't busy. I mean, the reality is they're the busiest kids, busiest age there is. So I don't know that there's a time when they're not. So I think combining it with the already elections, you know, I did appreciate this. And, you know, Toby, I think is more of an advocate for fall. And I appreciated his suggestion of maybe the daytime school board meeting at the high school being the opportunity to, you know, introduce them or having a better interview process. So part of, one of the things we talked about was having an exit interview. And I think Brent, you said the three questions, what went well, what went didn't? And what would you change? What was, what's the third question? Mike?
Yeah, what, what, what well, what were the challenges and what suggestions would you make? Usually draws out some pretty good information, so.
So I think, you know, from our perspective is one thing I'd also really like, and we had some of that conversation, but Ruby was the only one here. And so I think a written, you know, could you give us some feedback in a written form so that we're not taking this kind of time from everyone to see? And then looking at those before we make, you know, decisions because I feel like they're, they're, we can all think what we think, but I'd really like to hear from their perspective and.
And we can make that Google doc or Google form next week and get it out to them and just say, hey, you know, thank you for, as we wind down, we'd love to get your feedback and send it to their email and get that information that we can share with the board.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's true or not, but I, I was kind of under the assumption that we kind of started late this year. Is that correct or no?
Everything felt.
It did. Like, I felt like we were already halfway through the business and then they joined us. That's what it kind of felt like. I don't have any other experience, so.
Typically, typically we have selected their first official duty is that daytime meeting in October. So their peers can see them sitting up here and that's what a student representative does. And so I know we just adopted, or no, it is a second meeting in October, the daytime meeting, right? So I mean, if we can shoot for.
October twentieth.
Having them actually be on board. So doing the interviews at first meeting in October, really advertise it in September. You guys, I also think recording the student reps and having it available for next fall. I mean, luckily two of them will be here anyway. But showing it on PH TV, you know, why would, why do you want to be a student rep? Why should you want to be a student rep? And then boom, just to, it can be really thirty to forty-five seconds and so that's a, that's a good suggestion as well to get that on PH, PH TV.
I thought the student reps did a wonderful job and, you know, really did a good, gave a good pulse for what's happening in their personal world, but just representing their, their fellow students too. So kind of go back to what problem are we trying to solve here? And I think we need to keep that in mind.
One other thing that popped into my head when you guys were talking about just, you know, really getting different venues of, you know, communicating what the opportunities are, especially to those that may not feel welcomed or a, a part of the decision-making. We have affinity groups. You know, that we do, you know, surveys with, sit down with, and that might be a question. Do you know there's an opportunity to share your voice, be on a, you know, school board? And i- if it's yes or no, whatever it may be, what would the barrier be for you to want to access that? And then really kind of digging in deep there. So, and I think that would be a good question to start asking our team when we meet with them.
And to answer your question, Michael, I don't think that there's a problem. I think it's how can we strengthen this program? And that's, that's my, that's what I'm thinking.
I love that reframe.
So, and I, I'm hearing great things. I'm thinking getting the exit interview, starting on, starting the process early, getting the word out and making sure that we get the word out to, to all students and that all students feel know what to expect and feel welcomed and feel that they, that they, we want to hear from them, which will be, I think, a difficult challenge, but and Ruby gave some good ideas on PHSTV. And so I think that's a start where we can start. I'm happy with that information of, of the X interview. We'll start the, you know, putting it out at the beginning of the year. We'll do interviews the first meeting of October and and make sure that they are supported and hopefully we'll get some good information on how to support them with the X interviews.
That was a beautiful recap.
Thank you. Okay. We're almost to adjourn, Michael. I'm going as fast as we can. Um, next meeting agenda, we have the draft agenda in front of us. We will be having the public hearing on the budget. There will be some action items on adopting the budget, making appropriations for the fiscal year. The ad valorem taxes and more taxes. So it's all financial, our yearly financial action items. If there's any, the transportation contract will be in information discussion and the SRO contract will be in information in discussion. And we will do, be talking about board policies G and G part B. So if there's anything else you want to add, you can let me know now or later. And I am going to give you one second and then I'm going to adjourn.
You should get that part B by tomorrow too. So we're just wrapping that up. Or Monday, sorry, after the minutes.
I say Monday is probably okay. Okay. Thank you so much for everybody. What a great meeting.